It's 1:30. Paulo, where are we with our planning commission members? Are we ready to go?
We're still missing Janice.
Okay, do we have any kind of ETA?
She's being assisted right now trying to log on to Prime Gov.
Is it worth waiting, or should we start?
Let's. We could probably start if we can get her attention and maybe see if she wants to voice vote.
So the only, the only planning commissioners I'm missing then are Janice and Asa Highsmith, who is going to be absent from today's meeting. Is that correct? Everybody else has been prime government able to vote.
Um, no. Matt Hinkle cannot vote against Prime Gov.
Matt, can you hear me?
Yes, same call as always.
Are you gonna, are you gonna voice vote today?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll just call on you for voice vote when we get there. Let's, let's go ahead and get started. You guys continue to work with Janice. I gotta read through these instructions anyway, so let's just go ahead and get started. For those of you joining us in the public, good afternoon. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for September the 10th. We appreciate everybody joining us today. This is the virtual version of City Hall, so welcome. I'm gonna read over a list of instructions that deal with the meeting and the reason it's being conducted virtually today. First, I'd like to tell you all this is a video conference. We have, if the video conference is disconnected anytime during the meeting, the meeting will be stopped and reconvene once the audio connection is restored. Communications are unable to be restored within 30 minutes. Items remaining for consideration will be continued for the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting, which will be Thursday, September 24th at 1:30 PM, and that meeting will also be conducted by video conference. The agenda and documents for today's meeting are located on OKC.gov. If you've never utilized that web resource for that purpose, you can call 297-2289 for assistance in locating the documents such as the agenda and submitted materials. For anyone wishing to speak about an agenda item or to speak under Citizens to be Heard today, hopefully you have previously notified by staff, by phone or email, or by signing up online. If you've not done so, I would encourage you to email Cindy, C-I-N-D-Y.Lakin, L-A-I-K-I-N, at OKC.gov, and she can add your name to the list of people that want to be heard today, and she'll get that information to me. So I, I know that we have somebody that certainly wants to be heard on a specific item. The phone number, if you'd like to call instead, again, 297-2289. I will briefly allow a public comment on each agenda item. If you call in after your item's been heard, you'll be allowed to speak under Citizens to be Heard. Speakers will be allowed five minutes to comment on an item in conjunction with our bylaws. I'll keep time and notify you as your time begins to run to a close. When you call in, staff will mute your line. Please keep your lines on mute. We will try to recognize you. If you've joined us in the past, apparently, star six and spacebar will no longer work today, so we're gonna have to use something else. We're gonna try it a little differently today. We'll give time to make sure we can do that. And commission members will be allowed to speak or ask questions at any time during the meeting. Please remember that if you can chime in, only one person can be heard at times. So if there's multiple people in a room or something like that, just remember that we can only hear one person. I think that's it. If for some reason someone has to step away planning commissioner wise, please remember, announce your departure and your return, even if you're interrupting. It's important to let the public know you're stepping away. And then, of course, if somebody is gone for more than 15 minutes, or we fear that they are, we can always institute a roll call. So with that, I will call this meeting to order, and our first item on the agenda today is to receive the minutes from the August 27th, 2020 meeting. Do I have any questions or concerns on those minutes, or a motion to receive them?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington. I move that we receive the minutes from the August 27th meeting.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Okay.
I have a second from Commissioner Privet, I believe. Once available, please cast your vote. Motion is second to receive the minutes. Voting was available. Commissioner Hinkle? And I'm assuming Commissioner Powers is not yet voting with us?
Correct.
Okay. She would just be absent then from this vote, but we have, all the votes have been cast except hers. And the minutes are received. Next item on the agenda is uncontested requests for continuance. Mr. Butler, you wanna read those for us?
Yes, we have five requests, 26, which is number CE1031, deferred to September 24th. Item 27, case number PUD 776, also deferred to September 24th. Item 28, case number C71, 7199, deferred to September 24th. Item 29, case number SPOUD 1217, to defer to October 8th. And finally, item 30, case number SP545, deferred to January 14th, 2021.
January 14th, 2021, huh? Okay. Is there anyone joining us today? Francis, this is, this is you. Is there anyone joining us today that wish to be heard on any of those items?
There is nobody raising their hand, and I pretty much put all the people I've seen on your list, ability to speak.
Okay. Hearing that, I will take a motion on the continuances.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington. I move that the continuous, continuance requests be granted as read.
I have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second that, Privet.
Commissioner Privet, second to motion. I have a motion and a second to continue items 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30 from today's agenda. Please cast your votes once available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle votes aye. All commissioners have voted except Commissioner Powers. If she's absent, please mark that accordingly. And the continuances are approved. Next item, our new request. Do we have new, I think we have a few items for new request.
We have three new requests. Item 14, case number PC10681, deferred to 9/24, September 24th. Item 24, SPOUD 1246, also continued to September 24th. And item 25, SPOUD 1244, continue to September 24th.
Are the applicants on those items present on today's call?
This is David Box. I'm the Alcat on behalf of item 25 and item 14.
What are the, what's the nature of those continuance requests?
On item 14, it was requested by Commissioner La Forge. He had received a call from a neighbor to the north asking that we continue it to allow her and my client to get together to work on potential access issues. On item 25, I was just hired recently, within the last week, there is quite a bit of protest. And so in an effort to be able to find a time to meet with those people that have lodged a protest, I thought it wise to continue it two weeks to see if there is a resolution that can be reached.
Okay, understood. Item 24, is the applicant there with us today?
I do not see a Ken Fitzsimmons on the list.
Okay. Okay, I'll ask if there's anyone here that wanted to be heard on those items. That's item number 14, 24, and 25 from today's agenda for the convenience of the public. That is, item number 14 is PC10681. Item 25 is, or 24, excuse me, is SPOUD 46. And item 25 is SPOUD 1244. Anyone wishing to be heard on those items today? Francis, I'm waiting for confirmation. No one has raised their hand.
I think you're good to go.
Okay, I'll take a motion on those continuances.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we grant the new continuances as read.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Coffee, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 14, 24, and 25. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Cravens, this is Janice Powers. I vote yea.
There you go. Thank you, Janice. Commissioner Powers votes yea, and those continuances are approved. Our next item on the agenda are, as our consent docket, it is extensive. We did just continue item 14. Jeff, you wanna read those into the record?
Yes, item 1, C7198 is a final plat of Skyline Trails, and that's located east of Cemetery Road and north of Reno Avenue. Item 2, C7200, final plat of Surry Hills Marketplace, and that is located south of Northwest Expressway and east of Mustang Road. Item 3, case number C7201, final plat of Route 66, Landing, Phase 4. And that's located north of Route 66 and east of the John Kilpatrick Turnpike. We also have, it looks like you just have a duplication here. Item 4, which is case number 7203, is a final plat of the manors at Annecy, and that's located south of Northwest 150th Street and west of North MacArthur Boulevard. Item 5, case number C7204, final plat of Calm Springs, Section 4, located east of John Kilpatrick Turnpike and south of Britton Road. Item 6, case number C7205, final plat of Featherstone Edition, Section 15, located west of Southwestern Avenue and south of Southwest 149th Street. Item 7, case number C7206, final plat of Deer Hollow, located east of Indian Meridian and south of Southeast 104th Street. Item 8, case number CE1029, application to close and vacate the East-West Alley of Block 8 of the South Park Edition, located south of Southwest 10th Street and west of South Harvey Avenue. Item 9, CE1032, application by Okla, Oklahoma, well, I'll just say ODOT, and Union Pacific to close a portion of South Senape Avenue located north of Interstate 40. Item 10, case number CE1033, application by ODOT and Union Pacific to close a portion of South Lee Avenue, located south of Southwest 7th Street. Item 11, CE1034, also an application by ODOT and Union Pacific to close a portion of South Chartel Avenue, located south of Southwest 7th Street. Item 12, case number CE1035, application by ODOT and Union Pacific to close a portion, a portion of South Chartel Avenue located south of Southwest 7th Street. Item 13, case number CE1036, application also by ODOT and Union Pacific to close a portion of Southwest 7th Street located west of South Chartel Avenue. Item 14's been continued. Item 15 is the last of the consent docket. That's case number PC10684, application to 2800 North Cimarron Road from I-1 and I-2 to AA.
Okay. Is there anyone who wanted to be heard on any of those items that Mr. Butler just read into the record today? And I, I will pause here and give people time to consult with their agenda and also notify city staff by raising their hand in the meeting.
Everybody on the list has the availability to talk if they wish.
And okay, and how do they do that, Francis? I need to be able to provide that instruction in case people aren't familiar with Zoom meetings.
I would think it'd just be the regular click on the mute button and click that to green. We only have two people on the phone. That'd be the regular star six, as far as I know.
Okay.
Hey, Scott, you can, there's a couple options. You can hit Alt+A, and that will keep it unmuted forever. Or you can hold down the spacebar, and as long as you're holding it down and you're in this window, it will unmute. And star six on the phone.
So those instructions we've given previously will still hold true in this type of.
Yeah, true.
Okay, and then also, planning commission members, it's been requested of me to remind you that you need to keep your video on at all times during our meeting today. So please turn your video on if it's not on presently. If no one has asked to be heard at this point, I'm assuming they don't wish to be. So with that, I will take a motion on the consent agenda as read.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda as read.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second.
I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Privet to approve the items on today's consent docket. When available, please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
I vote yea.
All the votes have been cast, and those items are approved. Thank you very much. Next item is, we begin items requiring separate votes. Item number 16, Mr. Butler?
16 is case number SN091. It's considering a resolution to change the name of Southwest 4th Street, extending from South Robinson Avenue to South EK Gaylord Boulevard to Mick Cornet Drive. And Mayor Holt is with us, and Mayor Holt, would you like to introduce and discuss?
Certainly, thank you. Is, is that the will of the chair?
You go right ahead, yeah. Your show, man.
All right, well, thank you so much, and I haven't been in front of you guys in a year or so. So thank you, as always, for your service, especially in the, in these unique times. We've, we've had a lot of planning items come to council, so I, I fully recognize that your work did not slow down very much in this pandemic, so thank you for that. I want to speak just real briefly to Mayor Cornet's legacy, to the precedent for such recognitions, and also to some of the practical aspects of this particular choice. Mayor Cornet, as probably most people on this commission know, is the longest serving, was the longest-serving mayor in Oklahoma City history, serving for 14 years. Probably his two most notable accomplishments were shepherding the arrival of Major League Sports in Oklahoma City and the passage of Maps 3, which we are still wrapping up, but has brought fantastic amenities to our city like Scissor Tail Park and the Streetcar and River Sport. And of course, the Convention Center, which will open at the end of this year and is obviously very topical to this location. In the past, at least in modern memory, mayors who have been elected to multiple terms, especially three terms, have received similar recognition, so it is certainly not without precedent. Around City Hall is Patience Lading Circle. Just to the north of this location, along Robinson, Robinson becomes Ron Norrick Boulevard for a block. So this is not at all unusual and certainly befitting the long record of service that Mayor Cornet gave our city. Why this particular section was selected is really twofold. One, it is very fitting. It is the street that brings together the park and the convention center and the Omni, which are all very much legacies of Mayor Cornet's tenure. I, I like that as you walk between those three, those three landmarks at the intersection of Robinson and 4th, you'll, you'll look up and you'll see Mick Cornet's name, as it should be. You'll also have good visibility for the name over there on, on Gaylord slash Shields, where Southwest 4th meets that major thoroughfare. More practically, I always like to, when renaming streets, I much prefer to do so where it is a stub street, where it has support of the property owners. In this case, the street is very short. It is only a few hundred yards long. It lasts only from Robinson to Gaylord. So there is not the, you know, the issues that sometimes are raised by public safety or others about confusion when a street's name changes as, as some other of our streets do here in Oklahoma City. This would be end to end, as it were. And also, the property owner for 98% of this, of this block is the city of Oklahoma City. So obviously, should you and the council approve this, we would have certainly an adequate show of support from the property owner. So for all those reasons, I have made this application and appreciate your consideration of it and be happy to answer any questions or any comments that you have.
Thank you, Mayor Holt, very much. Members of the commission, anybody have questions? Or staff, or the applicant? Hearing none, I'll ask if anybody else wants to be heard on this item today?
I think we're good to go, Chairman.
Thank you very much. With that, if there's no more discussion, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm honored to make this motion. I think this is a fantastic idea. Mayor Cornet did an outstanding job in his tenure as mayor, so this is a well-deserved honor. And with that, I move approval of item 16.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. This, Rusty?
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council on SN091. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Well deserved, yes.
Commissioner Powers?
I vote yea.
Votes are cast. And that item is recommended to approval to City Council to you, Mayor Holt, so.
Thank you very much, all of you. Appreciate you. Take care.
Item 17?
Case number CE1030 is an application to close a portion of South Rockwell Avenue located north of Southwest 29th Street.
This is JJ Chambliss, Development Services. This is a application to close a, a segment of Rockwell Avenue that goes through the landfill. You saw this in November of 2019 and approved it, but because of an error in the legal description, it's having to come back through the, the same process it went through in November. And David Box represents the applicant.
Mr. Box, anything to add to that introduction?
I, I do want, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, I do want to add that there is a, a letter of protest in the packet. If you look at the, the letter and look at the address, the, the property of the protester is actually on the opposite side of the landfill. It's actually north of the landfill. Where we're seeking to close Rockwell is on the south side of the landfill. I'm not sure if the individual that submitted the protest letter wasn't able to look at the map and, and see exactly where it was. This stretch of Rockwell that we seek to close, again, dies into the landfill. There is no one else that would be using this, this stretch of unimproved Rockwell to access any property. So we did reach out via letter. We tried to get ahold of the, the individual that submitted the protest, and I don't think we were able to. But hopefully, seeing the images that, that you now see before you, they'll realize that they're actually on the other side of the, the landfill, and therefore, this closing actually does not touch or concern their, their property in any manner. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Just for the purpose of the record, the protestant or the person who wrote the letter of concern also included their ad valorem tax statement and provided the address. I referenced that address through the county assessor and can confirm it's on the opposite side of the landfill. My suspicion is that the notice, in order to reach the required number of people statutorily, had to stretch far beyond the 300 feet, which grabbed it, which grabbed her, and that created concern. But I, I can confirm, based on the address that the protestant provided, it does not affect the parcel as it's outlined. Commissioner Coffee, this is your ward. Any questions or comments on this item?
No, has someone from staff contacted her and explained that she was in error?
I can't answer that. JJ, anybody, do you know if anybody's made outreach on this?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, I suggest someone might do that. Given the circumstances, I recommend that we approve case number CE1030.
Before I take a second on the motion, I'll just ask if there's anybody that wants to be heard on this item today that's here with us, is from members of the public. Want to make sure we get that opportunity.
Chairman, I have Eric Ballinger wants to speak.
Okay.
So that's my mother's property, and.
Mr. Ballinger, if you could, I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Would you please start by giving us your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's Eric Ballinger. I live at 3170 North Edison Street, Sebastopol, or Great in California. 95444.
Thank you very much. Go ahead with your comments, Mr. Ballinger.
She, my mom was just concerned that that was gonna stop the, the easement to her property, and looking at it, I, I can see that it probably won't. So I, I think she submitted, like, they submitted an offer for the property, and she countered the, the disposal company. And then they, she never received anything back from them. And she just thought that it was gonna landlock that piece of land that she owns.
Yep, understood. As I said, it, it is, this stretch of road that's being closed actually dead ends into the landfill. The parcel is provided in the, in the protestant letter, actually is on the opposite side of that landfill. So thi- this particular application won't have any impact there, as far as we can tell from the information you've, you've provided.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for calling in with us today. Anybody else want to be heard on this, Francis?
No, sir.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, I did have a motion from Commissioner Coffee, and I'll take a second at this time.
Oh, a second, and who's reading these legal descriptions? So I've seen a couple of these.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval on CE1030. Please cast your votes when available. Staff, that motion was made by Commissioner Coffee, and that second was made by Commissioner Privet. Still indicates that we're waiting for that information to be updated. Paulo, are you working on that? Paulo, can you hear me?
That may be our problem.
Paulo says she's working on it. There's the recognition of the motion by Commissioner Coffee and the second by Commissioner Privet. We should be ready to vote here. Please cast your votes, Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
And Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
On my screen is everyone has voted, and that application is recommended for approval. Thank you very much. Item number 18?
18 is case number PC10682, application rezoned 12145 West Hefner Road from I-1 and C-3 to C-3.
This is a 3.6 acre site located at the northeast corner of Hefner and Piedmont Road. It's going from R-1 and C-3 to C-3. We're basically rearranging the existing C-3 that's at the corner from a horizontal to a vertical configuration. Staff found it to be in conformance with the Urban Low Comp Plan designation and recommend approval. Brad Reed with Crafton Toll is the applicant.
Mr. Reed, do you have anything that you want to add to staff's introduction of this item?
I do not. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, though.
Commissioner Claire, this is your ward. Do you have questions or comments for the applicant on this item?
I do not.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wanted to be heard on this item today that's with us?
No, hands are raised.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions or discussion on this item?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Commissioner Claire, I'll take a motion from you when you're ready, sir.
Yes, so with, with that, with no further discussion, I recommend approval of PC10682 to City Council.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Pennington to recommend approval to City Council on PC10682. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
And Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
All votes have been cast. And that application is recommended for approval. Good luck, Mr. Reed.
Thanks.
Item 19 is the companion item. Mr. Butler, you want to introduce it to us?
PC10683, application rezoned 12143, West Hefner Road from AA, R-1 and C-3 to R-1.
This is an application for 129 acres at the northeast corner of Hefner and Piedmont to R-1 for an anticipated single-family subdivision. Staff found it to be in conformance with the Urban Low Luda and recommend approval. Again, Brad Reed represents the applicant.
Mr. Reed, anything to add on this one?
Brad Reed, Crafton Toll, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard. No, it's just cleaning up that C-3 that we flipped to the other side, and then the double A zoning that was there. It's for an old golf course hole that was planned, but we've already kind of taken those out with the Coeur d'Alene and South Fork subdivisions on the other side of the road, so the last one, so it's just cleaning that up. That's all it is.
Okay. Is there, Commissioner Claire, do you have any questions or comments on this part of the application? Again, this is really a companion item.
Yep, yep, straightforward, so no questions.
Okay, anybody here from members of the public that wanted to be heard on this item today? I'll pause just a moment.
I do not.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you, Francis. I appreciate that very much. Uh, with, there's no further discussion on this. Commissioner Claire, I'll take a motion when you're ready, sir.
Uh, motion to approve PC 10683 for approval with City Council.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Coffey, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Coffey to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10683. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
And Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
All votes have been cast. And that application is recommended for approval. Good luck on this, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Item twenty?
Case number PC 10685, application rezoned 832 Northwest 116th Street from R-1 to R-2.
This is a 8,000 square foot, single-family lot located at Northwest 116th and Francis. Uh, a single-family home was located on this site that was burned, and the, uh, applicant would like to replace that with a duplex. Uh, staff found it to be in conformance with the urban low Luda and recommends approval. And Frank McLendon is the applicant.
Mr. McLendon, are you with us today?
He needs to unmute.
Spacebar on your computer, Mr. McLendon, or, uh, if you're.
Sorry, yes, I'm here.
You have anything to add to staff's introduction? And go ahead and give us your address for the record, if you would.
Yes, Frank McLendon, 22495 Lindy Terrace, Edmond, Oklahoma.
Thank you very much. Anything to add?
Uh, no, sir, I don't have anything to add. It's pretty straightforward. Uh, I believe there is, uh, several, uh, duplexes, uh, multifamily in the area. And, um, I thought it would fit the zoning, nothing else to add. And I would be glad to answer any questions that are posed.
Thank you very much for joining us today, Mr. McLendon. Uh, Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward. I'll just, for the record, we did receive a number of letters and signatures in opposition, uh, to the application, which were included in the packet. Do you have any questions or comments on this one?
I don't have any, any questions. Um, I, I think my comment would be, I look forward to the neighbors, uh, in their explanation. I think I'd just like to hear a little bit more detail, um, about their, uh, concerns considering that this property is one house away from R-2, and all of Francis Avenue, as it appears, at least on the maps that I've seen, appears to be R-2 as well. So I'm, I guess I, I would like to know, um, from them what the real issue is. Because not only just, does the house that this property sits on look direct, face directly, it faces, uh, duplexes. It's, it's even, again, one house over. So I, I guess I just want to hear more about that. And I don't have any other, other questions.
Got it. Um, before we talk, if, um, ask if members of the public are here, I want to start by requesting that if there is a representative of an HOA or someone who is designated to speak on behalf, uh, of the neighborhood in general, speak first. With that, Francis, if you would pay attention at, at this time, if there's anyone who wants to be heard on this matter today, this is PC 10685. Uh, this is your opportunity.
And if they could use the Zoom to raise their hand, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, spacebar on your computer will allow you to speak. You could raise your hand to also be recognized.
Mr. Chairman, when you happen to have any protest names, I may be able to look for.
Uh, I'm happy to read letters of protest that were provided, or names that were on, that were provided in the letters. Uh, there's a Stephen Horton who wrote a letter on this item. Uh, there is.
Might allow him to talk. This, Mr. Horton is allowed to talk if he would like to.
Mr. Horton, are you with us?
He needs to unmute.
Does he's muted.
Uh, Mr. Horton, you can unmute your computer by spacebar. If you're on your phone, I can't see your name, but if you're on your phone, it's star six.
I'm not a co-hoster, I'd do it for him.
Also make sure your device is unmuted.
I, I I promoted them, that may help.
Mr. Horton, if you'll use the spacebar on your computer, it'll unmute you. I'm very reluctant to move forward here without comment. This makes me very uncomfortable, uh, given the meeting format. I, I'd like to pause a moment and, and, and try to figure out if we can, if there's anybody else in particular too. So, um, 297-2289 is phone number for city staff. Cindy Lakin, it, it can assist you. I would request that you call that number if you're not able to be heard, uh, at this point. We have a number of people who signed up on this item. It's very important to us as commissioners in the city that we hear from people who are in opposition applications. Star six on your phone. You can hold the spacebar on your computer. That will unmute you. Uh, you also need to make sure your device is unmuted, and I'm gonna pause for a little bit of time here and give people logistically a chance to speak up.
Mr. Chairman, can you go ahead and read me some more names?
Well, I can read names the best of my ability to read them on what was submitted, then scanned and copied and sent to me. So, uh, there is a, looks like a Prince, uh, Carla Hicks, George Hall, um, Mario, I cannot read the last name, Mark Schuster, A Henderson, Robinson, Alexander, last name Lee, last name Washington.
I do not see any of those names. I am good. There's only a few other people in this meeting. I'm going to just give them the, all about the talk, and they can chime in if they want to.
Can somebody just mute the whole deal and see, work this out? Unmute, everybody.
Susan Randall, can you hear me? You're still on mute, Susan. I don't know if your device is muted.
Looks like someone's going through a muting.
Mr. Chairman, I have, um, uh, gave permission to anybody that talks that wishes to. So they just need to work on unmuting.
Okay. Susan Randall, I still can't hear you. It looks like you're talking, but I can't hear you. I You know, Commissioner Pennington, I'm, I'm inclined to move this item to the end of the agenda before.
I support that. I think that's an excellent idea, and, and, uh, since we started hearing it, then I'll just go ahead and, uh, do we need to make a motion for that? Is that, is that the?
No, I, I believe we can just do that administratively.
Perfect.
By moving it to the end of the agenda, and we're gonna move on to the next item. I, just with the number of people signed up, I, I want to make sure, again, if you're listening, uh, to the call today, and you are unable to speak and you're trying to, please call 405-297-2289 uh, for help, uh, on, on making sure we can hear you. And with that, I'm gonna move this item to the end of today's agenda. We will reintroduce the item uh, and discuss it again. So, uh, let's move, uh, Mr. Butler to item twenty-one.
Twenty-one is SPUD 1247, application rezoned 3201 South Coburn Road from R-1 and RMH 2 to SPUD 1247.
This is a this is a 3.6 acre site on the west side of Coburn Road, just south of Southeast 29th Street. Going to a, from R-1 going to a spud with a double A base to permit an urban farm use. Uh, staff found it to be in conformance with the urban low Luda, and we recommend approval with three technical evaluations that the applicant agrees with. And the applicant does want to add two additional TEs. One would be to allow no more than one mobile home on the property at any one time. And the other would be a provision that would prohibit, uh, medical marijuana from being sold on the site. And David Box is the applicant.
Yeah, good afternoon. Once again, David Box 522 Call Cord Drive. Um, this is an application that would allow my client to live on the site a, as well as farm, uh, the property. Their, their intent and their goal is to have, um, a, a seasonal farm stand, a type of operation where they're able to sell vegetables, uh, and have maybe fresh eggs and things like that. It is a property that has been, uh, problematic for quite some time. Uh, that needs to be cleaned up. They have already started doing that. Uh, there was two letters of protest in your packet. They appear to be husband and wife. My client did take the time to go, uh, and meet with them. Uh, we're not sure if, if they are, uh, still in protest or not. Our understanding was perhaps that once they spoke to my client, realized that this is now a neighbor and, and what their, uh, intent was, that this would, uh, satisfy their concern. There was, uh, another individual that raised some concerns. That is what led to the two additional TEs. Again, the two TEs are to, to modify that mobile home use, uh, to the point, 8200.7, and then limit it to no more than one. Um, my client is currently living on, uh, living in a mobile home on the site now. Um, their goal is to get the property cleaned up. They will then be building, um, their own custom home on the property. Uh, and so all of those things, again, with the addition of the, the, uh, limitation that medical marijuana, if ever grown, would not be sold, I believe satisfied that individual. Uh, we do need to have the retail use unit, because again, they do intend to sell, um, vegetables, produce, other things that are grown on-site. Um, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, but, uh, we believe this will be a, a positive step for this, this particular piece of property.
Thank you very much, Mr. Box. Commissioner Privet, this is your ward. Do you have questions or comments for staff or the other?
I don't. Um, kind of the same as last. If there is concerns, I'd like to hear from them, but, uh, um, I think it's a good development for this forgotten about area.
Yeah, I did. I, I would just add, I confirmed with city staff, just so that, um, you know, the protestants and members of the public that may be with us are aware this, this item as presented would allow for the cultivation of, of marijuana on the site. Um, but it would not allow for the sale of marijuana because of the limitation that the applicant is placing, uh, on the retail sales use unit. So, uh, that's the way the application has been reformed. At this time, I'll ask if there's anybody here that wants to be heard on this item today, uh, that's joining us from the public. This is your opportunity to be heard on SPUD 1247. And I'll pause for a moment.
Mr. Chairman, all attendees are, have permission to talk if they wish.
Okay. Um, Susan Randall, you can hear me now, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Can't hear her.
Well, my question for legal would be, given the last item and that we've received letters of protest here as well, if there's anything that you would like for me to do during the contact of this video conference meeting to ensure that members of the public are able to comment, please let me know what that is via message or email. And I will gladly do it. Commissioners, while we wait, is there anybody else that wants to be heard on this item today?
Just, just.
Attendees, I don't see the individuals, um, the Wells is their last name. I can see the list of attendees. I, I don't see the Wells, uh, as being on the Zoom call for what it's worth.
Commissioner Pennington, did you want to, did you have questions or comments on?
Yeah, I, just a question, and not to poke the bear on this. So if there is a quick, um, response, I'm just curious about how this works. In section eight of, uh, the spud application dealing with signs, one of this commission's favorite topics. And the use of temporary or seasonal advertising signs, and this limits size, but I guess not the number. How is that? It, can I, can I be told quickly how that is policed or managed by the city? Is that? That just seems so arbitrary for a, a group of people that are, are so serious about, um, the use of signs. That just seems like a very willy-nilly, for lack of a professional term, way of dealing with it.
Very fair question.
Well, it would be dealt with as any other, um, zoning issue, it'd be on a complaint basis. If we got a complaint, we would investigate and see if the signs are compliant with the SPUD.
So I guess if they were up too long and somebody was a neighbor and were upset about it, then they'd say, this is not seasonal, this is permanent, and then you would.
Absolutely.
Gotcha. Not trying to create a headache for Mr. Box, just saying, just curious. I think it's, no, I think it's a fair question. I think it's a good question.
This is Commissioner Powers. I, I do think it's a fair question, especially with respect to the lack of any limitation on the number of signs.
I understood. Our, our, our hope was that, um, by greatly reducing the, the size, um, that the lack of number wouldn't be a problem. I mean, no more than four feet in height. Um, you know, you, you, they envisioned perhaps having multiple things currently for sale, um, you know, at different times of the year. Eggs are available, eggs aren't, different times of the year, certain types of produce are available and, and are not. Um, a- again, no more than four feet tall. Our, our hope is that there's multiple things potentially for sale, and they, the traveling public, uh, would be able to see what items are for sale. And if they were so inclined to buy whatever that item was that happened to be in season, would be able to be notified and, and pull in. The nature of their use and the nature of the different types of things that are gonna be grown and potentially sold there. We, we do believe we need some element of, of flexibility in our, our signage package, but that's why we, uh, in an effort to reduce, you know, the visual impact, have limited it to four feet in height.
Uh, I guess the question is, uh, how many different types of things can they sell at once, then?
Well, this may surprise you, but I am no farmer, uh, but it is my understanding that there could be multiple types of vegetables that are grown within the same season uh, and therefore available for purchase. I did go to Oklahoma State, uh, but I did not take any agricultural classes.
Could, could, could we not, could we not say something that seems really reasonable? I mean, could we not say that we're gonna limit it to three signs?
How about?
How about two?
I mean, in all honesty, I, I just, it's, it's hard to predict. The size, limiting the size is why we didn't limit the number. Um, I guess we could say one and go much taller. But if less than four feet, lots of signs, if you think about four-foot signs, a lot of those are considered directional in parking lots and don't even require permits. Um, and, and so frankly, we thought we were being overly reasonable, uh, by limiting it to, to four feet.
Well, Commissioner Privet, I, I, you know, I'll, I'll let you put your, you sort of period on this discussion. I, I think it's a fair question. I think, you know, 34-foot signs that are 30 feet, 30 square feet total is just as offensive as a 25-foot sign that's 100 square feet. I mean, in terms of like, if we're really trying to regulate it, if that's a concern for the commission, I think it's fair to limit the number of signs to prevent there from being an unlimited number of temporary signs. I think that's probably a step too far than, than what, of what we've taken previously, uh, but.
Thirty, uh, but perhaps four.
I'm personally fine with four. I just, I just wondered how we, how we get.
Yep.
What, what road are these signs gonna be on, David? On, uh?
Coburn.
Coburn, okay. That's, I guess, a little better than 29th.
That, that's right. I mean, if you look at Coburn and the way it interacts, I mean, frankly, it, these, it's very unlikely that anybody, um, you know, is gonna be offended even if we have four signs out there.
But in my opinion, signs you need are on 29th Street, but that's.
Now, we, that we don't own those. Um, and that would have to be like a non-accessory type of sign.
I'll leave it up to you, Commissioner Privet. If, if you want to limit it to four, or you want to put it four as is, you, you, you take the lead there.
Uh, I would like to limit it a little bit. Four is good.
So we'll need to add that as a, uh, what, what would ultimately be then, if you make a motion on this item, it would need to be your sixth TE. Um, any other commissioners have comments on this? Hearing none, I'll ask if there are any members of the public here with us today that want to be heard on this item one more time.
Mr. Chairman, you did have a Michael Wells who wished to speak.
Okay, Mr. Quells, are you with us?
Yes, we are with you. Um, we were just going to, uh,
Yes, we are with you. We were just going to, by Michael Qualls, thirty-two oh one, South Coburn. I'm the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Qualls.
Box on my behalf. We were just going to indicate that we are amenable on limitation of the signs. You know, that's, we don't, we don't expect it to be a lot of signs or overly obnoxious, anything like that.
You're comfortable with the recommendation to limit it to four?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to be heard on this item? Francis, if you don't see anybody, I'll take that as a sign that we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Privet, are you ready, prepared to make a motion or do we need to review the T?
I am fully prepared.
Let's do it.
Make a motion for approval, recommendation to City Council of S P U D one twelve four seven, subject to one, two, three TEs, as noted in the staff report, plus T number four, there'll be one trailer or dwelling on the property at one time. And T five, no retail marijuana sales allowed. And T E six, limit to four signs.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Coffee, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council for S P U D twelve forty-seven, subject to the technical evaluations as amended in red. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
And Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Aye.
All votes have been cast, and that application is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty-two.
Number C seventy-two oh two is a preliminary plat of Arrow Heights, located south of southeast Twenty-Ninth Street and east of South Henni Road.
This is Jared Martin in Development Services. I'll do a quick intro on this one. The developer is proposing seventeen single-family lots on nineteen point eight seven acres, yielding a gross residential density of point eight five dwelling units per acre. Public street will be constructed for the subdivision. Private water wells and septic systems will be used on each lot. Access to development, we take him through a new street that will be constructed off South Henni Road. There will be sixty feet of rideaway and twenty-six feet of pavement as required by the subdivision regulations. Are seven TEs. The applicant is in agreement with all the TEs. However, they do want to modify T number three to indicate that they agree to provide an easement for a street stub, but not construct any improvement until such time is developed. To the east makes the stub necessary. The subdivision regulations do provide for that alternative. Mark Grubbs with Grubbs Consulting and David Box are both on the line in case you have any questions.
Mr. Box and Mr. Grubbs, anything to add to the introduction from staff? No. Commissioner Privet, this is in your ward. Before we get your comments on it, I will say, I spoke with staff about it. And just so the commission is clear, and JJ, if I say this incorrectly, please.
Yes.
And correct what I'm saying. So essentially, by providing the easement, what they're doing is they're bypassing the requirement to put the stub in today. That request is being made because there's a belief by the applicant that the stub probably won't ever be needed. The problem with that, as it's outlined in the subdivision regulations, according to Mr. Martin, is that the person who comes along behind, if the easement is there, would be responsible for constructing the connection across the easement. So essentially, this applicant is kicking the can on having to build the stub at all. It will fall on the future applicant who would be on the other side of the, of the proposed connection. In the past, I guess there's been some concern with people then coming in and requesting variances for that because there's really not a stub and it had to be built. So that's kind of the dialogue I think we need to discuss. Which of these items is the lesser of the evils? Is it creating a connection with an easement only? Or is it not requiring the connection and leaving it as a cul-de-sac in line with the variance? I think that's probably a discussion that's worth having. And Commissioner Privet, I'll let you lead us off.
Yeah, is it being, it's proposed to be built as a cul-de-sac, right?
Right.
What, a sixty-six foot easement or something across between the two lots?
Pretty much.
Okay. And for, I mean, that's okay with me.
It, it does allow it, but I think it's fair to say that it also, it alters the, both the likelihood that the connection will ever exist, and it changes the responsibility for who puts it in. So it puts that responsibility, Commissioner Privet, on a future applicant for that property to the east. They're going to have to build the road over the easement.
Right. Yeah, to meet where they're at with the circle right now. Right.
This, Commissioner Powers, I'd like to know what the basis is for the applicant's belief that the property to the east will never be developed.
Well, it's not that it won't be developed, or perhaps they, they get a variance. When you see these rural type neighborhoods, you don't often see interconnection. If you look, like if you could perhaps put up the exhibit, that's the aerial that was in the staff report. You know, these, these types of rural subdivisions, you often see them where they are kind of independent standalone subdivisions. Let's see if we can get that image up. You'll, you'll see that the neighborhood to our north is called Le Chateau, same developer, same style. That one's larger in terms of number of lots, but it's, it's a similar design in that it's a cul-de-sac. This really is, I think it's just allowing us to provide for the necessary connection if it ever happens. We have our doubts that it will ever happen. But instead of having a random street that is paved that sits there and frankly end up being, I think, eyesores for neighborhoods, if you look at the stubs that are built, you'll see oftentimes it become parking lots. People just park extra stuff out there because it kind of goes nowhere and people that live in front of it tend to believe that it's, that it's there. So.
How big are these lots, David?
What's that?
How big are the lots proposed?
Yeah, RA, so they're all acre and above.
All right. Be a good place for a basketball goal at the end of that street to nowhere.
Yeah. And again, we're, we're not asking for a variance. We're, we're seeking to utilize the provision in the code that specifically allows for this.
Well, it's interesting that you mentioned the, the development to the north because as I'm looking at this, I mean, one of the things that occurs to me is what a shame that this isn't able to connect to that. I, the idea of, of, you know, sort of providing the basis upon which a variance can later be sought by saying, well, you know, there's, there was this opportunity, they didn't impress it, you know, there's really no need for it. I, I'm not entirely comfortable with that idea.
We're not providing the easement that would allow the connection. We're not foreclosing the ability to have connectivity.
No, no, I understand that, but you're, but you're handing somebody a great argument to be made for why they should be able to get a variance later. So.
I, I, I think that, I think that's, I think Commissioner Powers' comment there is fair. And that's, I just wanted the commission to be aware of, of, of that as they think through how they feel about this particular item because it is, it is something just to be mindful of from a policy standpoint of promoting connectivity. I'm just not sure that this, that allowing this does that. But I understand that it can happen. I just think it poses, I think it poses a problem. So.
But if we think through the process, I, I don't know how providing the easement to allow connectivity somehow grants a variance to someone to say, we don't want to connect. Frankly, I think it does the opposite. It says, hey, this other development provided the easement necessary to allow connectivity. If they come and get a variance, your subdivision regulations require to grant a variance. I know we don't go through this analysis like those of you who have been on board of adjustment do, but the subregs actually lay out that the process for analyzing a variance to the subregs is very similar to the statutory process outlined for a variance in the Board of Adjustment proceeding. So I don't know how by.
And the subregs would, and the sub, to be fair, the subregs, and Mr. Martin, correct me if I'm wrong, the subregs would require them, they would need a variance not to build it over the easement, the way that I understood when you read me the subdivision regulations. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, thank you. So we, I think we, I think we understand the issue. I think commissioners have had a chance to sort of think through how they feel about it. Commissioner Privet, any other comments on this from you?
Can, Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Pennington.
So just so, so just so we're clear about the applicant's rights, they have the choice on whether to request the variance or to simply grant the easement. That easement, that is their statutory right to then do that as an alternative to providing the street stub, or we need to approve their ability to do so?
No, they do not, they do, they do not need a variance for, for, to, to allow that easement. That's, that's within the subdivision regulations as codified.
So it's not even something that we even need to, to address if they're choosing to exercise what is their statutory right?
That's what I was gonna say. I don't even know that it's your option.
Right. Well, we, but, but no, no, I think the option for the commission is, is, is that, is that really the best outcome? Or should we just get, grant the variance to have it be a cul-de-sac and, and let it be what it's gonna, what, why are we gonna, you know?
I don't believe the commission has the authority to dictate. Okay? The subregs say, and I'm going to read it, a developer has the option, if the street stub is required, which we're saying it is, to construct the street stub or to grant an easement reserving the minimum right of way required for the stub street and not construct it or any related utilities. I don't know that it's up for discussion for you to vote on. We are speaking a variance to the street stub. We're saying we'll.
So you don't, you don't want the cul-de-sac even though that's what you drew?
Well, of course we want the cul-de-sac, but I don't think that's up for debate. The, we have the option pursuant to the subregs. It's not your vote whether or not we can do it. The subregs give us, us the option. It's not up for a vote.
Got it. I, I was, I, well, it doesn't matter. I was making the point that we could either have a cul-de-sac because that's ultimately what you'd rather have, or we can create this fallacy that we're going to allow connectivity when we all know we're not going to create connectivity. So if, if, if you're, if that's the way you want it, then that's, that's fine with me. At least we have the option in the future of connectivity. So is there anyone here that wants to be heard on this item from the public? Hearing none. If there's no more discussion from commissioners, Commissioner Privet, if you're prepared, I'll let you make a motion.
Okay. I'm prepared to motion, make a motion to approve C seven two zero two, striking, I guess, T E three, and all the other ones stay the same, correct?
You, you don't have to strike T E three. You can leave it.
All right. Subject to T E.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat, subject to the technical evaluations. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
And Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Believe all votes have been cast. And that plat is approved. Item twenty-three.
Case number PC one oh six eight zero, application to rezone thirteen two hundred north Midwest Boulevard from AA to RA.
This is a hundred and three acre site on the east side of Midwest Boulevard, just south of Memorial Road, requesting to go from double A to RA for a rural residential development. Staff recommended RA two based on the density requirements of the rural medium luda. David Box represents the applicant.
Yeah, thank you. David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive. Cindy, could you display the zoning map exhibit that I provided you?
While we're waiting on the exhibit to pull up, Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward. Do you have questions for staff specifically?
No, not for, not for staff, but I will just make the comment while we're, while we're waiting that the applicant and I have met a couple of times about this development. The applicant also hosted a community meeting with neighbors where, where the neighbors expressed some serious concerns. I believe that with those conversations, I'm going to outline those things quickly because I, I hope that David, in our conversations, it sounds like we've addressed a lot of these things, but I just want him to make sure in his presentation that he addresses those specific concerns that neighbors have brought. The biggest one is access to well water, which is something that David has several exhibits and has done research about to address the concerns of nearby neighbors. There are a lot of concerns about traffic, and I believe that has been addressed, those issues can be addressed as well. Noise from the turnpike by removing the trees is another big issue. And finally, an issue that each commissioner will have to decide about the appropriateness is the lot size. So I'm sure, I hope that, that David, that you will address all of those issues because I know that those are the things most important to the neighborhood. And I appreciate the meeting. I think the neighbors were excellent. It was just a really well, well-done meeting because the neighbors were so willing to just be honest and it was a good conversation. So I appreciate that.
Sure. David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive. So I'll start with lot size. That's why I wanted this exhibit up. So, you know, we are at that, what would be the southeast corner of the turnpike in Midwest Boulevard. Granted that the neighborhood to our south is AA in five acres, but as you go to the west, what you'll see, the yellow hashed area on that map, everything you see that is yellow is RA, so one acre lots. When we had our neighborhood meeting, I had expected the meeting to be full of neighbors that were on large acreage type lots and were concerned about the density. What we found was, I think everyone except for maybe one, perhaps two, all lived within these yellow areas that you see, and they all live on one acre lots. Our average lot size and density is one dwelling unit per one point six acres. So in lots of instances, we are actually greater in lot size than the, the folks that live to the west. The two concerns that came up the most, frankly, we didn't talk about density that much. It was water and traffic. Traffic, I think, is the easiest to dispose of. The average daily trip count along Midwest Boulevard is fifteen hundred cars a day. At fifteen hundred cars a day, that is almost nothing. That is a very, very low trip count. We are going to have sixty-four lots over a hundred and four acres. It is not anticipated that sixty-four houses will do anything, even bring that trip count up to an area that would be considered something to even look at. So water, the, the first probably thirty or forty-five minutes of discussion really centered around water. This is well water out here, and we were getting some concerns from some of the neighbors whose neighborhood name escapes me at this point, but they were having some inconsistencies with their water output. There were instances where the neighbors are having to work together to alternate when certain people turn on sprinklers. Through the course of the meeting, it became clear that other neighborhoods that are directly to our west are not experiencing that and have wonderful water pressure, wonderful gallons per minute. We went back, talked to our, our well folks, and what we see based upon well logs in our area is that we expect somewhere between twenty-five to thirty-five gallons per minute. That is considered extremely high as it relates to well water. But it didn't make sense that some neighbors were experiencing problems and others weren't. Cindy, if you could display the, the fault line exhibit. We did further, some further investigation. What we found was, the exhibit you see before you from the Oklahoma Water Resource Board, the neighborhood in question is specifically the two people who gave us their address that were speaking as to the problems with water. Their homes lie directly on top of a fault line. Our water people tell us that being on top of a fault line would experience, or would explain the experiences that these neighbors were having as it relates to inconsistencies with their water. It would also explain why all of the other neighbors that were on the call that live in neighborhoods outside of the fault line area reported that they have never experienced any problems with their water. There was one individual that said in his summers, he fills up his pool, and it takes him two days to fill it up, but that he never experienced any decrease in water pressure. And all of the times he has filled up his pool, he has never experienced any problem, nor have his neighbors experienced any problem with water pressure. So you, water, I don't believe to be an issue based upon this. I understand that they certainly have a unique problem living on top of a fault line. That is just not something that we could, you know, can address here. The well logs do not show that anywhere outside of the area on the fault line experienced those problems. Traffic's not an issue. So when we look at the RA, I think RA that's Traffic's not an issue. Uh, so when we look at the RA, I think RA that's next to RA to the west, uh, makes, makes good sense. Cindy, if you can go to the one last exhibit, that being the, uh, there we go. You'll see that we intentionally made the lots on the south side of this development larger. Um, those do butt up to AA, so those are, you know, approaching three, two to three type acre lots. Um, overall, you've got sixty-four lots on a hundred and four acres. Uh, we believe that to be consistent with the area, especially considering the amount of RA zoning that exists to the west. Um, I did have some subsequent emails from a couple of the neighbors that I believe Mr. Pennington was also on, expressing their thanks for the, the meeting, but also expressing their, uh, support now, uh, for the development. So I think we were able to answer, uh, the questions that were, uh, out there. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and we would ask for your approval.
David, would you quickly, as, as you did in the meeting with the neighborhood, would you quickly explain about the traffic study fee and that those funds being available to the neighbors in the future?
Sure. Uh, so in the confines of traffic, you know, we talked about the fact that there is traffic impact fees now, and so at each building permit, there will be, uh, fees that are, uh, pooled into the, the fund, um, the Public Works maintains, uh, to go and, and solve global traffic problems as they present themselves, you know, in, in the future. Uh, but again, at, at an average daily trip count of fifteen hundred, frankly, I don't anticipate that, that being a problem at any point in the near, uh, future. Uh, but there will be impact fees generated from this that'll be in place, uh, and able to be utilized.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I'll ask, uh, if there are members of the public that wanna be heard today. I do believe that I received an email that we have a couple of folks that wanted to be heard on this item. So this is your opportunity to be heard, members of the public?
This is Jerry Baumeister. Can you hear me?
Uh, Mr. Baumeister, I can. If you'll start by giving us your name and address for the record, and then I'll give you five minutes to comment.
Jerry Baumeister, eighty-five twenty-five Northeast one hundred and twenty-ninth Street, which is in Rock Springs Acre, which abuts to the south side of the proposed addition. I'd like to point out that if you look at the section of land at which this one hundred and four acres is in, it is bounded, of course, by Douglas on one side, Midwest Boulevard on the west side, and a hundred twenty-second on the south side, and Memorial Road on the north side, or the turnpike. Uh, every single lot in that section of land is five acres plus. There is not an exception to that. So to go in here and say that this is consistent with the zoning of the current area is just not reasonable. Now, according to the three hundred feet rule, I guess, of notification, I only know of five people in Rock Spring Acres that was even notified of this. When you're out in a rural area and you're using a three hundred foot notice area, that three hundred feet doesn't even get across the lot. So the people on a hundred and twenty-ninth Street are on the north side, they got a letter. Anybody south of a hundred and twenty-ninth Street did not get a letter. So you have about fifty-plus people in this section of land, all of which have over five acres of land, that were not notified. And, you know, it just would not be consistent with that quarter section of land. Now, you can move around, you can go west, you could go west all the way into Edmund and say, yes, there's zoning that conforms to that as you move closer to the urban areas and to the interstate highway. But it is not consistent if you move east or even for that matter, south, and certainly not consistent in all the adjoining land within that one mile section of which this area is part. Now, I understand that the other issues that our, our representative, Mr. Pennington, has stated, have been addressed from a technical point of view, and I don't argue with that. I can see where current ordinances maybe can address that. But nobody has, I mean, there is no way that you can address the compatibility issue without considering all the land that is within that section of land. That is the majority of the neighbors that would be affected by this, and, and it's just not consistent. So, that's what I got.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baumeister, for being with us today. We certainly appreciate having you. I believe there was one other person who had signed up to speak on this item, and forgive me for not knowing your name, but if you're with us, this is your chance to be heard.
My name is Valerie Gulick. I live at one three one one five North Midwest Boulevard. We're directly across the street from the subject property.
Uh, Ms. Gulick, thank you for being with us today. We know about the concerns related to, uh, traffic and compatibility, dealing with density, and then the water issue. Is there something else you'd like to add, uh, that you think we could consider today?
Um, back when the northeast sector was put together, the plan for the northeast sector was put together, I served on that, uh, committee as a volunteer citizen. At the time, our property and the property across the street was zoned as a luda of environmental conservation, which at the time meant five acre tracts. So I'm not too sure how it metamorphosized into two acre tracts, but I'd like to see it, uh, one acre tracts. I'm okay with two acre tracts. I'm just not okay with one acre tracts. And with the, the drawing Mr. Box showed us about the retention ponds, so all of a sudden, the water that was flowing from that property into my farm pond is now gone. So those are my issues.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gulick, for joining us today. We appreciate having you. Appreciate your comments very much. Is there anyone else who wants to be heard on this item today? Hearing no further comments, I'll ask commissioners, other comments or thoughts?
Um, could I ask a question of staff to kind of put some color to some of the, the comments that were made? And I appreciate Mr. uh, Baumeister. I apologize if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly. I so apologize. And Ms. Gulick, um, because I think that is, that's a very, they raise excellent points about, um, density and compatibility. Um, for staff, this is urban reserve. Is that correct? And if so, would you mind describing for our, uh, our, our neighbors about what that means?
Um, so I can take that. This is Sarah Welch, Planning Department, and you're right. Currently, under the new comprehensive plan, it's designated as urban reserve. But as noted in your staff report, um, staff's been working on an amendment to Plan OKC for several months. And, um, in there, we've identified not only this site, but the, all of the urban reserve area that surrounds it. Um, uh, for a change to present to you later this year. Um, we, we are proposing that we change it to the rural medium land use typology, which supports, um, lot sizes of two to five acres. So that's why in the staff report, we rec, we made two recommendations, either change it to the RA two zoning district, which has a density that aligns with that rural medium, or continue the item and bring it forward with a comprehensive plan amendment, though, to, so that they can be heard together instead of separately.
Gotcha. And also, just to make sure that we're addressing some of the, the specific concerns that were brought up about Ms. Gulick's pond. I think that Ms. Gulick and, is wanting to make sure that she can continue to maintain the pond, that they, uh, my understanding from our neighborhood meeting is that she has fish in the pond also. So she wants to be able to continue to have that runoff that goes into the pond so that she can maintain it. And then, David, would you, can you briefly respond to that?
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, so this is certainly a, a different, a different concern than, than what we hear most times, right? Most times we hear, we don't want water. Here, we, we have someone saying, we, we continue to want the water. You know, what the state statutes require is that we not increase the historic rate of runoff. Um, so this will have to be engineered. These are likely gonna be ponds that, that will release at the historic rate. Um, so we don't anticipate drying up our ponds. We're, we're gonna allow the water to flow, um, you know, where it flows.
And then, just for, for clarity, if, if possible, if Cindy could put up the map that shows, um, the zoning of, of the area also?
Yes, my zoning map, Cindy?
Yeah.
While we pause, uh, waiting for that to come up, commissioners, I'd remind you, uh, we're being requested that we keep our cameras on during the entirety of the meeting. So if your camera's turned off, if you could turn it back on, please, that would be fantastic, or we'll need to do a roll call.
And, and so just for clarity, again, the property, the property that we are rezoning is in the, is in the upper right-hand corner below the turnpike. All the green area, I believe, is, is AA. Is that correct? And then the, the striped area, the yellow area, is RA, which means one acre lots, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just so we're clear about. And so if you were to move, for, as Mr. Baumeister mentioned, if we were to move further east, that would show more AA, uh, zoning, just for the sake of the commission being able to clearly understand what the area looks like. But as far as, as far as there being more density, well, this is directly across the street, directly across the street. There is one acre, there are one acre tracts. So those are my, those are my quick comments to set up the other commissioners commenting. I apologize for the length. Mr. Chairman?
Oh, no, you're fine. Uh, commissioners, any other comments or thoughts on this one?
This Commissioner Powers, I, I would like to hear from Commissioner Pennington just how he feels about the density. I mean, um, you know, staff is indicating that they believe that urban reserve may not be, um, appropriate, but, but that what would be appropriate is two acres. Here, what's being proposed is one acre, even if there is some existing in the area. If, if we approve this, we're just sort of adding to that impetus. How, how do you feel about that level of density in this area?
I think it's a good compromise if the area that abuts the neighbors to the south is the higher density, uh, are the higher density lot, I mean, excuse me, are the higher lot sizes. So if those are all, if, if we are making the, the assessment that those bottom lots, and I, I'm sure we will deal with this at the plating stage, um, if those bottom lots are gonna be two acres, I think that that's an appropriate compromise that's consistent with the plan that the staff is proposing. And then having the one acre tracts be right next to the highway, I think that that's, I find it hard to believe that that would be more disruptive for the neighbors that are to the south. I cannot speak for them, but in, in my analysis, that seems more appropriate. That seems okay, but that's, so that's my thought.
So, uh, I'll just add to this. I think, you know, kinda like the, um, I got a couple of things from today's meeting that I think we need to talk about at the end of the meeting, a little bit more in depth. But, um, you know, one of the things that, that bothers me is we've developed a pattern of letting applications come through without hearing the comp plan amendment. And I think we're all in agreement that it doesn't necessarily change how we feel about applications, but it is a part of the process that's being left out, and it's a defined part of the process for a reason. Um, I think that I, as a commission, we need to decide as a matter of policy if we wanna uphold the comp plan, which is part of our, our charge, um, and require these applications come through with those amendments as opposed to bypassing them. I think the argument's been made, uh, I certainly don't wanna put words in Mr. Box's mouth, but on multiple occasions that, look, we know what's gonna happen. It's gonna be a recommendation to deny the amendment to the comp plan. So what's the point? Well, the point is, it is a part of the process. And, and so it's almost become routine for us to, to, to skip it. Um, I think we need to be thoughtful about that precedent that we set there. Um, and I think we need to be thoughtful about keeping those things linked together as they come through. I don't know the facts. Someone can correct me if they know. Um, you know, if, if the comp plan amendment request was known and was gonna come through before this application came through, and that's why it's the next meeting and just didn't line up, or if it took longer, or I don't know why they didn't line up together, but it seems really silly that we're gonna hear this and then on, in the October meeting, we're gonna hear the comp plan. And, um, Sarah, do you or Jeff, somebody, can someone clarify why that happened?
Well, let me clarify that the, what, what I'm talking about is an amendment that is a lot, it's changing ludas all over the city. Um, it includes some text amendment, so it's more than just this one site.
Got it. It was not, ideally, the, the applicant would come through with their own proposal, but that, that did not happen in this case. It just, it just so happens that this is one of those areas that we were considering for an amendment.
So it's happenstance?
Yes.
Yeah. So just, I mean, that's food for thought, guys. I, I don't, I'm not, you know, I don't necessarily know that I have a strong opinion about it in the sense that I'm, I'm trying to advocate here, but I just think that we should all be thoughtful about it. I, I would say, I think we should try to, um, keep these things coming through as companion items so we're discussing them. It doesn't change our ability. If we feel like the comp plan amendment is a request for denial before zoning application, we've done it before. We can, you know, simply recommend, you know, we can approve the comp plan amendment regardless of staff's recommendation, and then hear the item. But that would be something else that'd bring to your attention in line with the comments that Commissioner Powers, uh, alluded to.
Mr. Chairman, I, this Commissioner Powers, I, I think you're onto something there. I do think it is appropriate for us to have some adherence to the process as well as the policy. Um, you know, it, it seems to me that the applicant in this case has a strong argument to make why a comp plan amendment would be appropriate, since they believe that, and we've heard that staff is going to be, uh, suggesting one themselves. That doesn't quite get them where they need to be for their zoning, but one of the, one of the options in front of us today in our staff recommendation is that this item be continued and it be brought back within a companion comp plan amendment. And I, I think that might be appropriate here.
One, I don't unnecessarily, hang on, Ms. Rocks, I don't unnecessarily ho- hold up an application, but I think, uh, we need to put folks on notice. The only, the, the only person who does this is Mr. Box. So I'm, I'm basically sort of putting you on notice that if you do this again, I'm going to feel differently about how we do these things. They should be companion items. You, you, you are sort of bypassing the system. Um, we recognize that the RA two doesn't get the application you've brought forward where you want it to be, and that's, that's my, that's why I'm sort of teetering on this one. But I don't think it's appropriate to continue bringing them through and ask us to keep punching past these comp plan discussions and ju, and just go right to the zoning. So, um, again, I can't speak for the other eight commissioners, but for me, this will be an issue that we talk about, um, more thoroughly as far as I'm concerned, uh, if they come back again without a companion item. Commissioner Pennington, this is in your ward. You ultimately know how you think. Um, I don't have a problem with this item based on what's been discussed. That's my position on it. Uh, no commissioners have, have said anything, so I assume we're to a point where we're ready to talk about a motion. If you are, um, I'll leave that in your hands. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to do so, and I, I just wanna make sure that, um, that our, our neighbors are on notice that when this goes back to the plating stage, they will have to come back and provide even more specific information about, uh, the way that this property is going to be, um, laid out. So I hope that you will, uh, just know that you're gonna receive that notice in the future. Another thing to keep in mind, because I appreciate Mr. Baumeister's comments, particularly about notice in a rural area. We are limited by state statute. So that is something to really consider talking to your state legislators about, is different standards for how we provide that notice. But we are following what the state law tells us we have to do as a city. So just wanted you to be aware that those are circumstances outside of our direct control, but that I, I agree with you that it doesn't seem fair that everybody that really is affected is not getting the, the notice that they probably should. So just wanted to-
Very good point, Commissioner Pennington. Very good point.
And, and I just, I just appreciate him bringing that up, because I think it needs to be addressed with the ci, with the state, for sure. Um, with that being said, I move approval of item twenty-three.
Um, this is, this Commissioner Powers, before we move forward with that, I wanna be sure I understand something that you just said. Are you suggesting that even though we are now approving, uh, potentially, uh, one acre rural residential zoning, that you expect that somehow when it's pat-platted, it's going to be something else?
No, what I'm saying is that when it's platted, the way, what we gave them approval for, if my understanding is correct, is that they won't all be, you have the ability to have one acre tracts, but that doesn't mean that all of them will be. And my understanding from the plan that Mr. Box has is that the lots closest to where Mr. Baumeister's neighborhood is are going to be larger lot sizes, and that would be, wouldn't we be able to see that in the plat?
Yeah, you will see it in the plat, and, and there has been some engineering done on it, which is reflective in the exhibit that we shared today, as well as, uh, on the neighborhood meeting, where those lots along the south are in fact bigger, uh, than, than the one acre.
Well, I think the important thing to remember is that the, the drawing we saw today as it relates to the zoning application can certainly change.
Yes.
But, but that, but once it enters the plating stage, uh, those drawings would be submitted and there will be another meeting for that discussion, which I think is the point that Mr. Pennington was making, correct?
Yes, and I, I just wanted the opportunity for neighbors to know that there are more steps in this process and that they should-
and that they should be aware of that. And we want them to participate in that too.
Got it. Well, I'm relieved by item 23 and that we had comment from public. So that's, that's reassuring that our meeting is working.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Baummeister has his hand raised again.
Mr. Baummeister, do you have any final comment for us? We do have a motion on the floor at this point.
So it's my understanding that basically you're going to approve this. And then when it comes to plating, we'll come back and discuss the sizes of lots on the, on the south side. Is that correct?
We, we are about to take a vote. I don't know whether or not it will be approved at this point, but we are about to take a vote as a commission on the zoning application, which would allow one acre lots. That, that is what we are voting on right now.
So what's, what's to keep the, the developer from just doing one acre lots once you approve it?
No, nothing.
Well, then, why would you approve that?
Because it's based, it's based on whether or not one acre lots are appropriate for the area, compatible with the area, whether or not the streets and police and fire and all these services are available to support that type of development. I mean, it's based on a litany of things that each commissioner considers in ways differently, but that, that is the application that we're voting on.
When Mr. Pennington stated that, that he would approve it because he thought by using two acre lots on the south side would appease the homeowners. And then you're coming back and saying, well, he wouldn't, the, the developer would not be limited to that, so he could go ahead and put in one. So he's contradicting himself. He's, he's, he's saying he's going to approve it, or he's for it. He's for it because of the siding of the lots on the south side, but the developer is not held to that once you approve it for one acre residential. So there's a contradiction in his logic there that I wish he would address.
Happy to address it. I think that the main thing is he can't build any houses there until the plat is approved. The plat has to be approved by this commission. So before they decide the final lot size on those, on any of this rezoned land, it's going to come back before this commission for me to have a vote on it. So you are correct that this rezoning application does give the, the applicant the ability to do that. But in order for them to implement that one acre lot size, they have to come back to the commission and ask for approval. And now that the applicant is on notice that I'm not going to vote for a plat that allows one acre tracks to the south. So that is how both of those things can be true at the same time.
Thank you, Commissioner Pennington, for clearing that up. I do have a motion on the floor. So at this point, I'm, I'm, I need to entertain a second on that motion. We've allowed some comment here, but I need to entertain a second on that motion if there is one.
Claire, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Claire to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10680. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Nay.
Votes have been cast. And that application is recommended for approval to City Council.
Thank you.
We need to return to item 20. That was the last item on the agenda. The rest of the items have been continued. We moved item 20 to the back end of the agenda to ensure that we allowed for public comment. In the essence of formality, if you would, Mr. Butler, please reintroduce that item.
Yes, item 20 is PC, case number PC 10685, an application to rezone 832 Northwest 116th Street from R1 to R2.
At this point, I'll jump to asking members of the public if they're with us and wish to be heard on PC 10683. This is your opportunity, and I'll pause just a moment. I feel better that we've had other people speak on other items. We do still have attendees in the meeting. If there's no more discussion, Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward as well, so I will take a motion at this time.
I, I move approval of item 20.
I have a motion to add a second.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just say really quickly, sorry. We, sometimes when we have issues like this where we don't, where we know that there is opposition because of the letters we've received, I later get brought into meetings with, with our councilwoman and, and neighbors. And so I just want to be clear that it's on the record in this recorded meeting. We received these letters. We have read them. They are, they are available. We took them into account as we are making this choice, as we're making this vote. So.
I think you did a great job of articulating the difficulty of not approving this case. There is R2 directly to the west. There is one R1 residence that separates the two of them. I'll go so far as to say that it would be a bit disingenuous that we've gone into inner city wards like two and six and made it a point to try to increase density and allow housing options. But when it gets this far, that would be a problem. As a matter of policy, I think this application is perfectly appropriate. It's recommended by staff and supported by the comp plan. If I could second your motion, I'd do it.
Claire, second.
I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Claire to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10685. Item 20 on today's agenda. Please cast your votes when available.
Might switch that second. Might hit the yay button or the second button before the mute button.
They're working on it. Okay, it is available. Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
And Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you very much. That is the last item on separate items to be heard. So the next item on the agenda is communications and reports. Planning Commission committees, I don't believe we have any formal committees at this point, so I'll skip that. Planning Commission members, Commissioner Claire, anything?
Well, my.
Commissioner Powers? Nothing?
I don't, not have anything.
Not a thing. Commissioner Coffee?
No, just, excuse me here, just a second.
No, hand.
Just a shout out to Mike Privet, who worked his magic with my dinosaur computer, which allowed me to be more efficient in my prime gov voting today.
Commissioner Privet will probably send you an invoice, so it's good that you, that you thank him.
I'll pay.
Commissioner Privet, any comments or things from you?
No, glad to help, Mary.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Well, Mike came and tried to fix my computer last week and didn't work, so I'm going to-
You might need to rephrase that. It was working and it worked fine with me there. As soon as I leave, it was broken.
Forward five, thank you.
Yeah. Some people you just can't help, Mike.
Yeah, he could use a new computer too. That thing's a little ancient.
Commissioner Pennington, any comments?
Just to say, I, I do agree with you about the comp plan amendments. I think we need to be consistent in the way that we have that process. In the formality that's required, then we need to require.
I don't know how to use this zone, so.
Whoever Monica O is, could someone mute, mute her at this point? I'm sorry, Monica, if you've got citizens to be heard, we'll put you on in just a minute. Go ahead, Commissioner Pennington.
Yeah, just, I, I just want to echo what the, what the chairman said. I, I agree that we need to just make a decision about whether we're going to enforce it or whether we're not, but we need to consistently do it. And I think it is fair for us to have the comp plan amendment because a lot of those comments, the biggest concerns that were brought up were about that. And I, I think that's the time to have that, to have that discussion. That seems appropriate. So anyway.
Yeah, I, I, I made that comment to Mr. Box when we visited about the item, just that, look, you, you know, this has become a bit of habit and maybe that's our fault, and I'll take some responsibility there, you know, just because I've never made it a big deal. I just wanted the commission to talk about it. I think us not supporting the comp plan is not a good look. And I think it, I think it's perplexing to staff as well as to how to handle those situations. I would just like to advocate now that we don't have an item before us and we sort of put the person who's doing it on notice that we just, I think as a commission, we should either agree or disagree. If you disagree, please speak up. That if an item comes before us and it doesn't have a companion comp plan amendment, we continue it.
I support that.
Does anybody not support that? Okay. Well, I mean, you know, we could, obviously it's not a vote here. We're just having a discussion as a commission. But I think we need to remember that the next time one comes up and just, and just hold to that. It's not an unreasonable request. Staff is alerting them to the need to do that. So they're aware of it. I think it's just something that we need to change in the way we approach it. And again, I think staff is very aware that that may not dictate any change in the outcome of zoning cases, but it is still the policy we should follow. So.
This is Commissioner Powers. I absolutely agree with all of that. And I think as we were, we were being pretty generous to let him off the hook today, frankly.
Yeah, I, you, you might, you, you might be right about that. Commissioner La Forge? None? All right. The only other thing I have that I want to talk about, that I just, I, I visited with staff a little bit about this and I just kind of wanted to bring it to the commissioners' attention. There was a few items today that got continued at the last minute. One of them was a consent item. And I really, I, I, I think it would be a better policy for us, both in terms of the way we conduct ourselves with the public and in the way that we try to maximize the efficiency of our meetings. When items are being continued at the last minute, I think we should hear that item in turn. And I think we should give commissioners the opportunity to provide any feedback. When it gets continued at the last minute, everybody's read the packet. Everybody knows what their issues are. And let's just say, for example, that the issue was, you know, Commissioner Pennington was concerned about signage on, on the, on a particular case. And it gets continued for an entirely different reason. And then it comes back two weeks later and we actually talk about it for the first time. And now it comes out that there's a signage issue and then all of a sudden the item is continued again. Well, as we've practiced in the past, by giving that feedback to both applicants and protestors, I think we do two things. I think we let them know any other issues they need to talk about during the continuance period. And I think we're putting both sides of, of an issue on notice of where the commission stands. It gives us a chance to say, I'm in support of this item as it is currently prepared, or I cannot support this item unless there's a change to the signage and here's why. I just think that's better than it, the applicant sort of saying, okay, we agree because there are issues that nobody else knows about that we want to continue it. It gets pulled out of the meeting early and it's not discussed. I think we're setting ourselves up for meetings like we had two meetings ago, where there's just item after item that has to be really litigated out on the commission and, and it, it certainly contributes to it. So I would just offer up that I think it is a better policy for us. I'm curious how other commissioners feel that if there's an item that gets continued, as, as opposed to it being on the requested continuance before the agenda gets printed, that we keep that item in turn and we discuss it to provide feedback. I just think that's a better approach. I'm, I'm certainly open to any disagreement on it.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Rusty. Were you, was your distinction that it was on the consent docket? It wasn't, was it? Because I, I agree that-
No, 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 not at all. It, it, no, it, it was that there were two other items that were, that were individual items too, that were not consent, that we did the same thing with. And those were continued as well, but those people didn't get the benefit of any feedback from us having just prepared for the meeting. And that, and that, and so when it comes back, we're actually going to be discussing it with them for the first time. And I started to say something at the outset of this meeting and I, I just didn't want to turn over the apple cart, you know, without having this discussion as a group before we did that. So that's why I bring it up. No, nothing to do with the consent item.
Yeah, that makes more sense then, because I was going to say, everything you said would also hold true on the regular docket. My only question in with everything you said, my only concern is the length of meetings. I get that everything you said is true. There would be more feedback on those things, but we could end up spending an hour on something that from the very beginning of that hour-long discussion was destined to be continued. So I would be concerned only because of the length of the meetings.
Yeah, and I don't think there's anything that stops us from saying, Rusty, when we get to the item, that there's been a requested continuance and simply have the discussion by saying, this item's been requested for continuance two weeks. Does anyone want to be heard the same way we do when it's, you know, when it's on the, the continuance docket? And then simply saying, is there any commissioner feedback that someone would like to provide on this item? And that would just give you a chance to say, I, I want to make sure that it's known that I take issue with it. Because the other thing is, if one commissioner is ga, engaged in a discussion in their ward, or just generally speaking with a, with the applicant or a group of protestors, we don't necessarily know what's being discussed. And so you may not know, or I may not know, that there's another issue you have with an item, and that would be the chance to put that on the floor. So I think we could still get through them quickly. I, I just want to prevent it coming back two weeks later and going through that process again.
I, I think that makes sense then, as long as we're recognizing it could be a slippery slope if you start talking to them, talking about them. But as long as you as the chairman, remember that, and as it gets three, four, five minutes in, you just stop and remind, folks, this was one that we wanted, we were planning to continue. This was for really brief highlights now so that people aren't surprised. So I think if you manage that, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I'll do my best not to screw it up, but I'm-
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Commissioner Powers. The, the, I, I totally get what you're saying, and I think it's a, it is a very valid point and really kind of a good idea. The, the one question I would have about it, you know, it might be an interesting process or a helpful process to have the applicant or the staff, whatever, circulate. I don't know, you know, drafts as they're going through the process so that people who want to participate or offer input can. The, the concern that I have about, about doing that, very often over the course of my career, you know, I've been involved in cases that are big, huge controversial cases where there are a large number of people who are attending meetings. And to have, you know, at the last minute, an agreement between the applicant and those folks, that this item is going to be continued so that we can keep talking, but then not to be able to tell people, so therefore you don't need to show up. You know, that when people have to take off work to come down and appear at these hearings and so forth, to say, well, unless, unless we know for sure that it is going to be continued, or, you know, if there's, if it's going to be discussed, I want to be there to hear that. There seems to me, to me, to be some circumstances in which that might get a little dicey. And it, it generally has to do with ish, ones where there is a lot of controversy and a lot of people involved. So I might have to think through that a little bit and we can talk about it some more.
Yeah. Susan Randall, can you communicate with us at this point?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can. There you go.
Oh, my gosh. I finally checked the right mic.
Is there anything that would prevent us from a formality standpoint of, to Commissioner Powers' point, I think that's a fair one. The items are then proposed for new continuances. Is, would there be any issue with us having the conversation I'm proposing at that point by just saying, look, we're going to, we're prepared to continue this item for two weeks or a month or whatever the request is? Is there anybody that wants to be heard on that? And really, you're just having, you're giving time for an objection on the continuance. And then right before we vote, just asking if there's any commissioner feedback on this item that relates to this item before the continuance is granted? Is there any problem with doing it that way?
I don't think there's any problem. I don't see anything that would prevent you from doing it that way.
I think that would assuage-
Still on the docket, you're discussing, you know, the continuance still, I guess.
Yeah. I think that would assuage Rusty's concern and Janice's concern. I just want to make sure that didn't create some.
Let me, Janice. Mr. Box mentioned that I got the phone call. Well, their whole reason for the continuance was due to lack of sufficient information. It was a holiday weekend. They just got all those things. Well, maybe most times the continuances are for that reason. So they were tremendously relieved that they did not have to scramble, find a lawyer, do all these things for a meeting today. And so when they heard it was, that the applicant graciously agreed to continue, they were relieved that they could, okay, great, well, now we can take our time. If it would have been a situation where, well, it's intended to be continued, but we're going to talk about it. And then they would have been right back in the predicament that Chairman, Commissioner Powers mentioned, that they were relieved when they were told, okay, we have time. So that would, you're, you're, great point, Scott, about why you would want to do it, but I'd need to think about that like Commissioner Powers as well.
Well, I, I, look, I, we don't have to do anything today. Let's, let's give some time for everybody to stew on it. My, my only thought would really just be, again, to provide an opportunity for commissioners only to provide any kind of feedback on an item they think that the applicant or the protestant should be aware of before it's continued to aid in those discussions. That would be the intention. You're, you're absolutely right. That's how it should have to be managed to, to limit that. But everybody, you know, take your time and think about it and, and- But everybody, you know, take your time and think about it and, and we can discuss it again before, uh, we reconvene the next time. So, um, those are the only things that I have. Uh, I get, Rusty, you didn't speak up. Do you have anything else you want to add just personally? No? Okay.
No, I couldn't. I couldn't get to the mute button earlier, but nope, I never know.
Um, okay, planning department, anything?
Um, just by, speaking of, uh, procedures, uh, the bylaws, uh, Scott, uh, you mentioned those last time. And, uh, Susan and I have had a, just a little bit of back and forths, uh, between then and now uh, on a couple minor issues. So, uh, I will, I will be sending those bylaws out, uh, today. Um, so if you all want to, uh, uh, send me your feedback, uh, we'll put a uh, whatever your comments are, we'll kind of make a, I guess, a consolidated copy and then we can, uh, see what we get and move forward from there. And Mr. Chair, I, I am trying to recall what, uh, what the plan was from last time. Uh, did, did we want to have a, a study session of some kind on that?
Yeah, I think at some point the idea was to give, uh, the other planning commissioners time to review the set. Once you circulated the documents, I don't think the documents have been circulated. Um.
No, yeah, I'm, yeah, that's what I, I'm going to send that out today, uh, to, to all of you and, and then, uh, I'm not sure how much time you guys would like, but, uh, there's no rush, I, I guess.
No, I, I just would love to see them get, you know, get updated, uh, to a modern forum and give people a chance to make suggestions and changes, the same way we just had the discussion about how to handle, you know, new continuances and all that. Um, so let's circulate them and then maybe you give a month and then we have a study session after that. And that should be more than enough time to, to review and gather thoughts, but that would be my suggestion.
Okay, we will proceed, uh, to do that and like I said, I'll send that out today. Uh, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff. Uh, Development Services, JJ?
Oh, sir.
Susan?
I have nothing further now that I learned my mic. I apologize for not being able to speak. And I guess it changed on me from a different type of meeting than I had this morning, so.
Susan, would you just briefly, uh, remind people why it's important to keep their cameras on so they know?
Well, and I'll, I'll get this to you in a, in a, um, formal email, but, um, it basically has to do with the new statute that requires you to either say you're gonna be the, attending by video conference or teleconference or however you're gonna be attending. So if you're attending by video conference, you need to have your video on. Otherwise, that's not a video conference, in my opinion. So that's basically it, but I will get you that statute and let you all know, um, why that we need to do that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that a lot. Um, citizens to be heard, is there anybody that has been hanging around, uh, that wanted to comment on an item that, uh, wasn't on the agenda today? This is your opportunity to speak to us. There was, uh, someone that was on that was speaking in the background. Um, I guess it looks like they've dropped off, unfortunately. Um, so, uh, hearing none, unless there's other business, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Craven?
Yes, sir.
Have any idea when we're gonna try to go back to live meetings? Is there any discussion of that yet or are we looking at next year or something?
Susan can correct me here when I say it wrong. My belief or my recollection is that sometime in November, the statute that allows us to meet this way is set to expire unless it is extended by the state legislature. Um, we would be required to begin in-person meetings once again. I don't recall when that date is. Susan, what did I say that's wrong?
Um, I don't know. I need to look at that statute again. Um, I'll let you know. I, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'm taking that from a, an article I read in the paper, Matt, so I, I don't remember the exact specifics, but I believe that we had a, the ability to have meetings like this because it was allowed by the legislature and I think that expires sometime in November.
Yeah, that's what I had heard, uh, from the city man, leadership as well. I thought it was November fifteenth, but it's, it's November, uh, unless ended.
I, I think there's probably a pretty good chance it gets extended through the end of the year, but, but, you know, that, I don't know. So I'm assuming, uh, that, uh, staff will communicate that to us once there's been a decision there. Um, so, yeah, good question, Matt.
There's been talk about city council having, uh, having some in-person meetings, uh, sooner than that. Um, but, uh, I, I'm not sure what the status is on that. I think, uh, well, yeah, I'll, I'll let you know if, if that, if that does happen or if other groups start to meet in person.
Well, not to, not to belabor the fact that we're motioning to adjourn, but I, that made me very nervous today when we had the item, the first item. And on this meeting, we changed the format, so you got panelists and attendees instead of the way we had it. And you, you don't know if people can communicate and that just, I mean, that makes me really, really nervous, so. Um, it'd be nice to get back to live meetings if we can do it safely, but, you know, I'll leave that for other people to decide. I'll do what they say, so. I have a motion a second, or no, I have a, I don't have a motion yet. Matt just made the motion.
I'll make a move that we adjourn.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion seeking to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you guys. Have a great week and a great weekend.
Everyone.